Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I call this regular scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners session to order for Monday, February 4th. If I could remind everybody to silence your phones and any other electronic devices that make noise, you can just silence them, please. Again, welcome. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chair Mark?
Here.
Chairman Lerner?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Attorney?
Oh God, our way, our truth, and our life, we worship you. Quicken our conscience by your holiness, that we will find nourishment in your truth. Help our commissioners and all individuals representing Craven County to open their hearts to your love and to surrender their desires to your purposes. Lord, in this tangled world, we are conscious of our woeful inadequacies to sit in the seats of judgment, balance the scales of justice, and to respond with equity to the myriad calls of human needs. We need you, eternal God, to crown the deliberations of this Board of County Commissioners with your wisdom to fit these challenging times. We pray in your mighty name, amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started, I'm going to call Chairman's privilege. If you come in this evening, you'll notice in our back row, we've got some honored guests here that we'll get to later. But first of all, we have our Sheriff, Chip Hughes, in the audience that I'm going to invite up to give us a rundown and a briefing on his successful rescue of the individual we had a couple of weeks ago. Sheriff, if you wouldn't mind, sir?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to appreciate the opportunity to recognize these heroes that are sitting in our audience tonight. I can tell you, the job that everybody did during this very stressful and tear-jerking at times event was just outstanding. Craven County has a lot to be proud of, so does a lot of the surrounding counties. Our emergency management coordinator and our assistant are heroes. Those guys are nothing short of outstanding. And I've spoke with some of y'all at length about what I did out there on-site. I don't know how he did it, and I've called his name out a number of times, and I do that because he won't. But he is an asset to this county, and I don't know what we'd do without you. And of course, understanding his guidance, you're a hero, buddy, and I appreciate everything you did out there. I don't know how you did it, but you did. I tell you, this was, it was a call that every public safety official and law enforcement officer in this nation dread getting. A three-year-old that is lost in the woods, and then we look at the area that he's lost in, very heavily wooded area, cut downs, just wet, just a terrible terrain for anybody to be lost in, much less a three-year-old. So we got there, when we got the call in, we figured the child had been missing roughly 45 minutes, maybe a little longer, so we were already behind. This little fellow had already gotten a jump on us, and of course, the limited information we were getting about where he went in the woods, based on five-year-old's testimony, is what we were going on. We were able to bring in dogs from neighboring jurisdictions, one from the Pamlico County Sheriff's Office, which was a bloodhound tracking dog, and New Bern Police Department brought in their dogs. But due to the heavy amount of traffic that had already taken place, we were, it was very limited in the scope of tracking that we would get, so Ira and Stanley, myself, started calling in additional resources from the federal level with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the State Bureau of Investigation, NIS from the naval base, just surrounding counties, Lenore County, Jones, Carteret, all these counties. I had calls from roughly 25 sheriffs that offered their assistance. We immediately called in the State Highway Patrol for their air support in the form of helicopters with FLIR, who came in and started the search. We also had Marine Fisheries brought in their aircraft and just started low-level searching. And then emergency management started to put together a plan for a systematic way that we'd go about covering these hundreds of acres that we were going to have to cover. And I can tell you, without the help of all of our surrounding agencies that reached out to us, the citizens of Craven County are just, you know, when things happen, and we've had a rough 12 months with hurricanes and now this, we come together very strong when things happen. And it was just the people that put, the volunteers that put their lives aside to come out and help us. And even when we told them, you know, that we were going to have to suspend searches from volunteers and concentrate on our well-trained professional searchers, they understood. As bad as they wanted to help, they understood the situation that we had and what we were faced with. But these folks out here, and our citizens in Craven and the surrounding counties, that's who we have to thank for this, as well as the good Lord. This is nothing short of a miracle. When the clock started running on Casey, it was not in his favor, and the odds were against him. But I can tell you, through the due diligence, our partnership with other agencies, and the work of these men and women here, that's why we got a successful find on this child and brought him home to his parents. And we had promised to do that, and that was a pretty strong promise. I also want to thank Commissioner McCabe and Commissioner Jones for coming out there to the site, spending time with us, seeing a lot of the challenges that we were faced with, and they pledged their help. And for that, gentlemen, I do appreciate that, because that means a lot, and a lot of first responders saw that y'all were out there. Same thing for the church. New Haven Church out there opened up their doors to us. We had to have an off-site staging area where all of these volunteers could be organized and then teams be formed and transported to the search site. This church opened up their community center and left it open to us for two and a half days, and myself and Commissioner Jones went and worshiped with them the Sunday after we found Casey, and it was just, it was very moving. And our, your church is great, great folks in what they did for us. We couldn't have done it without them, because there was really no place out there for us to stage 600 people and then transport them in as we needed them, because we had to put together a very methodical, well-planned search. Our major from Lenore County headed that up, and what an asset you are to your county and your sheriff, and I thank you. Chairman, that's kind of a three-day event condensed into about five or six minutes.
Sheriff, I want to thank you for that. I'm going to leave right now for the board. I'm going to, well, questions or comments to the sheriff once I get finished here, if that's all right with the board. We'll get everybody up here. As the sheriff brought out, we got seven in the audience tonight. We were due 13. The other six are on duty or on call protecting this county, are unable to be here. Please don't misunderstand what this board is doing. This is no reflection of everybody out there, the appreciation that's done. We will come forward on the 18th with a resolution to all of the departments that were on board and recognizing those people. Just give you an understanding of where we come, if we try to get everybody in here. The courthouse is not big enough to fill what we'd have to bring each individual in. We got over 100 departments, both federal, state, and local, that were involved, that generated anywhere from 600 to 750 local and outside people that came in. So the audience out there, TV world, please don't construe this that we're only recognizing these people. I want the public to know, I want a face put to a name. This community does come together. This community does support when we need to and when we're called to. What I'm going to do, if you don't mind, I'm going to call out the names, and I'd like for you to come up and stand in front of the podium here, and then we'll get some picture taken time on that. But first of all, realize, I'm a southern man. Names are not my forte, so if I mispronounce it, correct me. It will not embarrass me, all right, on that, so I'll give you a heads up. I'm going to start with Major Ryan Dawson, Lenore County Sheriff's Office. Second will be Captain Shane Greer, Chaco Winnity Search and Rescue. Hendrix Valenzuela. Stanley Kite. R. Whitford. And Alex Alton. And I got Stanley.
He was the young man. She lost the opinion.
Okay, okay. Okay, we got, okay, on that. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the faces of the rescue team for that little boy that was pulled out alive, and I think we all owe him a round of applause and hand. Yeah. This time, I'm going to ask the sheriff to join us here in the middle. We're going to get some pictures. Go ahead, Sheriff. On one end, I'll take the other end. Here. At this time, I'd like to open up to the board. The board has any comments?
Yes, I'd like to shake everybody a hand.
Especially my man in the cabin here, if you don't mind. Good job, man. You helped me. Good job.
If you wouldn't mind, turn around. Well, you go on there. Go on there.
Thank you for every problem. I thank you so much.
She's honored. She takes for keeping track. Is there any comments or anything that the board would like to say, or any? I open it up.
All of that to have a comment. As I always say, our county, Craven County, is one of the most outstanding counties in all the state's. I'm proud of our county, and it's been showing me, the Lord showed me, especially in this last past year when that storm came, how we can continue to work together. We will come together whenever a tragedy comes. But my prayer to the Lord is that we come together and stay together, that we may be concerned one from another. I have, my grandson is, he's five now, but I just, my heart broke when I heard about this little boy, said it could have been my little grandson, or anybody else's grandson out there in the woods. I used to wait down, round our road down in that area. I used to dig potatoes with a small boy down there, and I knew that's a, looked like a bacon area now. There's not many people down there. I can say you all did an outstanding job in what you did to bring that little child back to its family. Appreciate it very much.
And I would like to thank God, and your God for doing outstanding work, and also I thank your sheriff, on top of everything, and your God did a very, very outstanding job, and it was very significant. And I think everybody in the country and the world, seeing this on television, and they're proud of all, everyone that participated in this search. I want to say, thank you.
I would agree with Commissioner Sampson. Craven County is a great county, but I also want to recognize the other counties that were involved in this. I think that North Carolina as a whole, the counties cooperate with each other, and that's why we're successful. Thank you.
It's, I'm tired of us having crises that require us to all come together. I think we've had enough of those in the last few months, but boy, I'm glad that this is a community with a capital C. And I don't mean just Craven County, I mean eastern North Carolina. Thank you.
Well, we can keep on and on and on. I think that they said it, but I think on our part here in Craven County, we do have a lot to be proud of with the leadership we had with these two gentlemen from emergency management, and for the sheriff to be in office no longer than he has, to be able to step up as he did and to lead something that most folks will never dealt with in their careers. I think you did a wonderful job, and thank you.
A lot of people, excuse me, a lot of people were praying. Thousands and thousands of people were praying for the little boy, but praying for all of you as well. So we know God answers prayers, and in this case, we're very thankful that he did. So we thank all of you, obviously the sheriff, our two guys, but if you guys are not from our county, if you ever need help, I know this guy will make sure we give it to you. Thank you.
Sheriff, I want to thank, I want to thank you personally and the whole team. Before I give up my chairman's privilege, there's a number of names here I want to read into the record that was unable to be here, so we can have them on the record, and that's Investigative Sergeant Michael Sawyer, Investigator Josh Doughty, Investigator David Muller, Investigator Stephen Lewinsky, Investigator Brad Jenkins, Investigator Rebecca Hopper, and Lieutenant Mike Tillman. So if you could get the word of those, that we truly appreciate it. And again, this board, this county owes you a debt of gratitude and a debt of thank you for the results of that. So Sheriff, thanks for everything. Chairman, thank you very much. All right, I'll give up my chairman's privilege, and we'll go back into the meeting. First item on the meeting is approve agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is petitions of citizens.
Rebecca Brooks. Rebecca Brooks?
Excuse me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to read what I have, because if I don't, I'll go over four minutes. My name is Rebecca Brooks, and I reside at 1907 Oakwood Street, and I've been there here in Craven County for 28 years. And I know many of us have been affected by the recent hurricane, and I want to share a few highlights of my experience. After having been displaced in Greenville, our home was 98 percent destroyed. We felt the best option for our two American short-haired cats, Trappy and Butter, were to take them to the emergency shelter in James City. We were assured that they would be cared for until we could retrieve them, and it was confirmed through paperwork that they were not being surrendered. Leaving them in a home was not the best option for us. We had already taken our support dog, a terrier poodle, to Richmond, Virginia for safety at a friend's home. Our displacement found us in several Greenville hotels for up to three months. Transportation between Greenville and New Bern was difficult, both in distance and money. The shelter was contacted on several occasions to check on their well-being. One call was returned to confirm that they were well. December 11th, we were finally able to get back to New Bern and are currently living in a camper in our driveway. Unfortunately, the camper could not accommodate our cats, and the shelter wasn't formed upon my visit to see my babies. At that time, I learned that they were shutting the emergency site down. I worked with the contractors to agree to prepare one room so I could bring them home. Upon contacting Lisa Lee, who runs the center, I informed her of my plans. She then stated vehemently that I was a liar and that I would pay, that I would say anything to get my pets returned. She continued to yell at me and stated that she would have to see the home for herself, but in the meantime, she had no more time for me and was hanging up, which she did. And there were several witnesses to that. Since then, I have not seen my pets. I went to the sheriff's office for help from Investigator Jenkins, who has since been very busy due to the activity in New Bern. He did say earlier January that he had contacted Ms. Lee and was surprised that she would be that difficult to communicate with and that she was not budging in her decision to return my pets. He said that he would continue to work on my situation and felt that it could be resolved easily. Ms. Lee has gone as far as to contact the previous owner, Mr. Hatch, and Maureen, who gifted Trappy and Butter to my family, especially after our cat of 10 years had died. Ms. Lee has also stated in a report that my cats had fleas when they were brought in. This is not true, and there is a witness to that fact that was at the center. Trappy and Butter are family, and I simply want my babies back. I feel at this point that this is all so fraudulent to say that I can get my cats back, only to be denied using false accusations to uphold a decision to keep my pets with the pretense that they were not well and would not be well cared for. I don't like being a victim, but in this case, I am, and my pets are caught in a ridiculous, cowardice, heartless crossfire, and I need help and direction in this situation. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, before you go, I normally, in this board, normally don't, does not respond to comments like that, but I think it's necessary that we do. I think you've started the right process. I'm going to ask you, the sheriff is here, I think you started the right process, and I say that only because that shelter does not belong to the county. It's not our shelter. So I think if you have time and stick around, if you would talk to the sheriff and have him get all the information back, you've got a good investigator that's working on it, let's see how we can move forward with it.
I spoke to him this evening, and I understand he's very busy.
Okay.
Thank you.
The sheriff is right here, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, gentlemen, ladies.
Terry Hartley Thomas.
My address is 550 Cool Springs Road, Arnold. I'm also here regarding Colonial Capital Humane Society and their fraudulent practices. I've also made copies of the owner's records, and I have furnished the clerk of court all those copies for all of you gentlemen with everything highlighted. The problem is, is that Colonial Capital was shut down in 2016 for improper care of the animals, improper records. They were opened as an emergency shelter for Hurricane Florence. Most of the people who worked there are wonderful people and try to do everything that is right. However, Lisa Lee has established a pattern of not keeping up with the records, not keeping up with the correct vet care, not keeping up with what she says she's going to do. This is fraudulent, and in this case, it is theft, okay? I have included copies of the failed inspections. They failed their last inspection. They were supposed to have closed as of December 20th. They did not. They were told by the state, you will not take in any more animals. Two hours later, on January 8th, when they'd been given that order, they took in dogs and cats that same day. Dog Hercules is one of them. Casper the Cat is another one that was just recently taken in and posted this last week. So we are no longer in an emergency state. Why are we still allowing this place to go on? And I'm here under North Carolina 52J 0201, that states, "Compliance with all federal, state, and local laws, rules, and ordinances relating to or affecting the welfare of dogs and cats in this facility." So yes, the commissioners do have a say. You may not own it, it may be a private entity, but we need rules and regulations to govern these private shelters and what's going on in them, and to make sure that when they are being used in an emergency, that people get their animals back. The paperwork, I was, I am a paid, by paid, I mean, I paid my membership to join Colonial Capital. I included in those records a copy of my receipt. I can't find bylaws. I can't find a schedule of meetings for the board. Lisa Lee is a board member. She is not on the executive board, yet she has made herself judge and jury over whose animals go back to whom. This is not right. It's wrong. We're making people suffer more needlessly. She also is standing in the way of animals going to shelters outside of Craven County. This is not right. When we had the emergency, there were multiple agencies that wanted to come in and help us. Every time we managed to set one up, she found a reason for it not to go through. I've included copies of the letter that I sent to the board of Colonial Capital. The president won't even step in and do anything about the way she's doing this stuff. The board was CC'd on all the copies from the state's letters. I included all of that in your packets. Basically, my thing is, is that as a group, as a community, we all came together, and the commissioners also put their stamp of approval on the emergency shelter. And yet, we're allowing somebody to control this who obviously has a pattern of not following the law, the rules, or the regulations. And it needs to stop, however which way you guys deem for it to be.
Thank you, ma'am.
Reverend Ray Griffin.
Senator Ray Griffin, basketball in North Carolina. There may be another government shutdown, but God will never be shut down. The anti-American fundamental transformation of Americans, believing Democrats against all things American, so help me God. These Democrats are gung-ho to eliminate the phrase, "So help me God," from future committee witnesses swearing in. "So help me God" seems to have gone right over the head of these pitiful Democrats of the devil's party. These words have been welded into the songs of Christians for centuries. They are in the league with the devil and have sold their souls. Nor do the Democrats want the people to be able to tell their gender of what they testify. Their ideology is steeped in atheism, and they have no such ideas that only include race or gender. Their central goal is to destroy traditional cultures, focusing on family values and faith and love, and God for our country, love for this country. They wish to destroy the Christian family structure. The family is the core of the nation. If you break the family, you break the nation. They promote sexual promiscuity and lift it up. They fantasize it and feel proud to be part of a seemingly sexually active society, even outside of marriage. And they make homosexuality and all the lifestyle, and there's no one that can deny or one that cannot be restricted, and they just want to be free to marry as they choose as long as the two agree. They make abortions legal and make it easily. They build clinics for abortions, health clinic in schools, and they just simply say, "Enjoy your life, be free of unnecessary fears." In other words, they should not be happy with unwanted pregnancies. So they simply have the right to kill humans in the third trimester. New York law makes it now perfectly legal to murder a baby in just a minute before it's born. Want you to listen to this, under average, 1,876 black babies are aborted every day. Since Roe vs. Wade- Since Roe v. Wade, there has been an estimated 69,971,000 babies aborted. The government is led by the Democrats. This building, so help me God, would have been passed if the Republicans hadn't shut it down. And I say to the Democrats, it's sad, as Judge said one time to some of his people, "May God have mercy on the souls of the Democrats." I'm proud to be an American, and I want to be what God would have me to be, and it's sad if you can be a Democrat and pursue all these things, and all these things are happening, and you lift up that party and you vote for one that are in that situation, people like Roy Cooper, the Obama clan, the Hillings, and all these, then you are voting against the word of God. And I declare, I love you to death, but you can't spell yourself a Christian if you voted against the Bible. You placed your hands on the Bible, you said, "This is the way it's going to be," you pledged the Constitution not to murder children, and now New York City's trimester does it, and they were proud of it, and they lit up the building and simply saying, "We're going to do it this way or do it any way we want to." It's sad, we're living in a world, one child was saved. Thank God, one was saved by the grace of God, and here we have turning it around and killing thousands every day. Does that make any sense? We are living in a nation of society that should be helping one another and helping to keep life valuable, but now life is not valuable anymore. Thank God for all these people that went out and looked for that one soul. And that's what the Bible tells us to do. Go out into this lost and dark world and reach that one that doesn't know Jesus Christ. New York has a no capital punishment, they don't believe in the death penalty, but yet they are murdering children now in the third trimester, or even there's another governor that put it at the point, even at the full term, that can murder a child. What kind of land are we living in? Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Glenn Fink, which the tax, Craven County Tax Party?
Yeah, I'm Glenn Fink, 646 Goose Creek Road, here in New Bern, North Carolina. I have a couple topics that I wanted to cover. The first being the consent agenda. I know a few years ago, the board at that time decided to use that as a method to try to be expedient with the meeting, and there's several topics that I think does fit into that category to where that's probably an okay thing to do. The concern back at that time was that we wouldn't see and hear things that was important for citizens to get the details of. So my request on this first topic is just this, for every single commissioner to look at the consent agenda items. Each one of you have, I believe, the right to pull anything off the consent agenda. Look at the consent agenda and decide, if you were a citizen and weren't sitting on the board, would you be interested in this? And should it come off the consent agenda to where it's discussed and taxpayers and citizens can hear more details about that? So I just, I make that request for one thing. The other thing is, there was an article in a local paper, but I did a little bit of research. This is an audit, and it's an audit of local management entities and managed care organizations. And Trillium is the managed care organization that supports our county and a lot of other adjacent counties. And the only company that was called out specifically in this, around poor management and lavish spending was Cardinal. And I didn't read every word of this audit, but I went through it fairly well. And so that was the only one that was called out specifically about things that just shouldn't have happened and the spending that took place. But as a group, all of them were identified to have excessive cash reserves, $439 million of cash reserves, which means the difference between what they took in and what they, what the fees were to provide care, that connection between Medicaid recipients and the people that provide that service. So Trillium was tracking about the same as everybody else for 2015 and 2016. There was a three-year period, 15 to 17. The third year, they didn't have near as many. In fact, they lost reserves. And that in itself isn't necessarily a good story, although you don't want them to have taxpayer money that wasn't necessary, right? I mean, if they have reserves, they took too much money from the taxpayers for that particular period. But they, the other side of that story is, they get to decide what they call invested, you know? And they can decide where some of those reserves go to. We were a recipient of that. I think it was $150,000 that was bolted on to a $100,000 project we had at a park. And we got a nice park upgrade out of it here locally in Craven County. But why do they get to decide that we take Medicaid money and build a park with it? I don't, and why do they get to decide if we take Medicaid money and build a rehabilitation facility, multi-million dollars in a county not too far from here? I mean, I don't, I don't understand. They have a lot of power. These are big businesses. And this audit shows that there's some areas where they don't pay, don't do proper justice to the, to the way they manage things. And I guess another thing that really jumped out at me was, the audit even found these companies paid $347 million to lobbyist contracts, which by the way, is disallowed under the federal cost principles. 347 million. I'm not saying who we do business with is involved in that.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair, anyone else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Positions, next, next on the agenda, consent agenda, minutes of January 22nd, 2019, tax releases. I have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments, any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booger?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Next on the agenda, Coastal Community Action Community Service Block Grant Request. Patricia Benefi. Welcome.
Good evening. The information for our community services block grant application for 2019 and to 2020 is in your packet. What we're asking of the commissioners, of the board of commissioners, is that that application be reviewed. We have given you, given the board an opportunity to ask any questions. I will, I looked up some, some statistics for Craven County. We have been serving Craven County for quite some time with the Community Services Block Grant. For fiscal year 2017 and 18, we served 306 people in Craven County. 21 of those people gained employment. 11 people gained better employment. Four people gained employment with benefits. 10 people completed education programs. 26 people secured standard housing. 81 people were provided emergency assistance, and 41 people received employment supports, and 16 people received education supports. Before the, the grant cycle that is upcoming, our expected allocation is 300, excuse me, We serve, in addition to Craven County, we also serve the counties of Carteret, Jones, and Pamlico Counties with the Community Services Block Grant. At this time, are there any questions that I may answer? Yes, sir.
And this is a federally funded program? And you receive approximately about $2 million a year towards this program?
No, sir.
No, sir?
No, sir. The allocation for our program, for the Community Services Block Grant, is just a little bit over $300,000.
From the federal side?
Yeah, from the federal side.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I think you're taking it in totality for what the whole coastal community action programs are. This is one facet of what they do. They also function as Commissioner McCabe's on their board, he may get elaborate. They head start other programs in there. When we were talking during budget, you were looking at the federal allocation for those type of program, which is actually much larger than $2 million in totality.
It's 12 million.
12 million, correct. This is a part of their community services block grant that goes to some other services that they provide.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. White served as representative of the city of New Bern. Who is the current representative, or is he still? Who's representing the city of New Bern?
You mean on our board of directors?
Yes, ma'am.
I am not, I don't have the full listing of the board of directors. Mr. McKay may be able to answer that better than I.
It's in here.
He's on our board.
He's on the board, representative of the board.
Okay, but is, is there a representative from the city of New Bern, from the city government?
Uh, no.
Okay.
He's on the board.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just another question. I think it's self-explanatory, we just want to make sure here.
Yes, sir.
I think, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, you have eight positions here that make up, they are the makeup of Coastal Community Action, the whole umbrella, is that correct?
Eight positions?
Yes.
Which positions are you?
Well, I have, I mean, in our packet here, we have eight positions here, one being vacant, well, actually, two of them are vacant, and it's got salaries beside it.
You're looking at the, yeah, what you're probably looking at is this, as the budget for this program only. As the county manager has mentioned, Coastal Community Action is made up of a lot of programs, and we serve approximately eight counties. In, within this program, we have some of the salaries for the, our program director is paid from this, from this grant. We have case managers, family development specialists that are paid. Those family development specialists work one-on-one with our families, they do case management, they kind of work within our services. And basically, what this program is designed to do is alleviate barriers so that people can gain better employment, they can increase their household income, and be able to take care of themselves, which is to become self-sufficient. Part of my salary as the family and community administrator is paid out of this grant, as well as, I'm thinking there's any, any other salaries. There's some of us that are work, we work within, with two programs. We work out of Head Start and out of CSBG.
Anyone else? Ma'am, we thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Department Matters, Tax Department Report of Unpaid 2018 Taxes and Tax Leans, Advertisement Date. Ronnie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As your tax collector, it's my duty on the first Monday of February each year to report to the governing body the amount of unpaid taxes from 2018 that are a lien on real property. You will recall that we billed last year's taxes in July, and since then, for the year, we billed a little over $48 million in the gross amount of the tax levy. That is, does not include any releases that have been made from it. So I report to you tonight that the unpaid amount that are a lien on real property for this, for 2018 are, is rather, $1,611,391.17. As of the close of business today, we've collected 95.94% of the tax levy, which is down a bit from last year. It's down about $48,800 from the previous year. However, when you, when you look at the 10-year history, the average percentage has been about a little over 95%. So we're still a little bit higher than that. So if, I've given you the numbers that the statute requires me to give you. If you have any questions about that amount or any of the other information I gave you, I'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
All right, before we do that, I'd like to receive a motion to authorize advertisement of the Sun Journal on Fifth.
So move.
Motion and a second. Now, we have any comments, any discussion?
Would you say that the hurricane had a little bit to do with this?
Given the events since September, yes, I would say that that probably is a contributing factor to the collection percentage being down about 37 hundredths of a percent over last year.
Ronnie, I got one question. Compared to what you've done in the past, at this time, come 1 July, how much more do you think you're going to be able to collect based on what you've done before?
By the 1st of July, we traditionally collect over 99% of the levy, and I think last year, the percentage was 99.27, something like that.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable it's going to come in, it's going to come in under, but you're comfortable you're going to get some of this?
We are, yes.
Okay.
We sent out delinquent notices, about 10,000 of them in January, and many of those have paid. February is traditionally the time that we begin the enforcement remedies for collection. So we encourage folks that may not have yet paid to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You got your authority, Ronnie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on the agenda is Planning Subdivision for Approval. Chad Strawn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have one major subdivision for approval tonight. And you have this map here in your packet, but I'm going to read off the details of the subdivision, just for the record. The planning board met on December 11th, 2018, and recommended the following subdivision for approval. Quail Town Crossing, Section 1, Phase 4, Final. Property is owned by LRH Development LLC and surveyed by Brad Sue. Property is located within Township 6 off of Station House Road. This phase contains 27 lots on 8.75 acres. The lots propose to be served by County Water and City of New Bern Sewer. Give you a vicinity map here. Here is Catfish Lake Road. And here's an aerial image of the parcel to be subdivided. A vote's needed in order to move forward with approval of this map.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
This discussion, it comes up every time, and I just, you know, we've, we've had trouble in the past with water backing up on others. You feel confident that what's being proposed, that we got enough flow to not back up the water?
Well, even though it performed, and I got Kevin Alvis, he's the engineer on the project in the audience tonight, and it performed well during Hurricane Florence, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't believe there was any water, it was any, any structures within the subdivision. So I think you had, what, about 28 inches of rain in that general vicinity, is the latest I pulled up. It seemed to be functioning during that event. With this phase here, we've added, the engineers added an additional measure here. As you can see, the water from this division is going to be coming, this is going to be in an eastward direction, and the water off of the road here is going to go into a stormwater retaining area. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin. And then it's going to have an outlet that's going to go into that stream. So during your events, your first one and a half inch of a rainfall is going to be held in this stormwater mechanism here before it gets to the crossing, which goes under the main road of the subdivision.
And that's when it goes into warehouse? Is there, does the flow there in the warehouse or there, or?
That rotation, that's some private-owned property at that blue line, then that will actually go underneath the road, the crossing that we've had problems with in the past.
Okay.
And then on to warehouse.
Last question, Mr. Chairman. Last question, Mr. Chairman. I see it says final, so this is, this is the last phase of it, or?
This is the file for this division and the whole project. You're done. Okay.
So we might have to ask this question in a minute. All right, 10-4, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, I have one. If I'm recalling the map correctly, Catfish Road is a little east of this, and Old County Line Road is a little west of this? Can we go back one?
Yeah, all right, there you go.
Okay.
This outlined in blue here, so that road is actually going to be running east, east by northeast.
Okay, my concern is access by emergency vehicles. Old County Line Road is probably not going to get paved, that would be a road bed, they'd have to redo the entire road bed going through the swamp. I don't think DOT is enthused about that. My question is, if there's an evacuation or emergency vehicles, like a fire truck or anything else, can they access that property?
Yes, ma'am. The entrance point into this division is on the paved section of Catfish Lake Road, right past the-
Right behind the church.
Right behind the church, yeah.
Okay, good.
And you would take a right, and all the turning radiuses meet DOT standards in order to be able to turn fire trucks around.
You answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
All right, I appreciate Commissioner Jones, because this is in my district, this is mine, this is the same area we had problems when I first got on the board.
Yep.
We're not going to have those problems. Now, going under that road, we increased the size of that covert to take that load that we had there before.
Yes.
Is the increased size of that covert going to increase, going to take the additional 28 in the runoff?
Yeah, the, the crossing that was upgraded is in that location right there.
Right.
And that crossing, and the water flows in this direction. The next crossing is at Tebow Road, and the area in which can flow through those pipes is equal to or exceeds, is that accurate, Kevin? So it's, it's really over-engineered at this point.
And all of the, with the exception of this new section, everything that you see that's developed in that subdivision now, discharge is downstream of that cover. There's stormwater ponds and all discharge on the downstream side, not through that. This is the only section of the entire subdivision that will go through that pipe. So all of the flow that's coming through this pipe, the only new flow that's being added to this increased pipe for this entire subdivision is this section. Okay. One last thing. You're going to be here with us, I'm going to be here for a number of years. I'm coming after you. This board may not, but we better not have the same problems we had when I first got on this board with that, that area out there.
Well, if it comes back, we'll try to find a solution.
Chad, how much development would that church, how far from the church?
Oh, it's, it's a good piece.
It's going to affect it all?
It's not going to affect that much.
Yeah, you know, it's probably a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
Yeah, the church is good.
Okay.
All right, we have a, any other questions, comments?
Nope.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
You got it, Chad.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Sheriff's Department Budget Amendment, Sheriff Hughes.
All right, thank you all for allowing me to come before you all tonight and discuss some of the needs we have at the sheriff's office. Sometime, we've been talking about communications throughout the county, that is, the lifeline for my deputies to the 911 center, to their supervisors and other deputies, as well as other agencies, public safety agencies throughout the county. And also, this is too far for four-wheel-drive vehicles, where I'll look to put a four-wheel-drive vehicle on at least two of our shifts that work the road throughout the county. The purpose for this request is currently, let me address the four-wheel-drive vehicles. Right now, we don't have any on the road. So that limits us into certain, there's certain roads in the county because of their condition, certain roads within the Croatan that were unable to get our regular two-wheel-drive chargers that sit fairly low to the ground, and we found out during the hurricane, if they would go through six or seven inches of water because of the intakes on these chargers, they will flood out. And I think we had a number of vehicles that were flooded out in the hurricane we just had. So the four-wheel-drive vehicles will allow my deputies to respond to just about anywhere within the county in a timely manner, including all of the Croatan. Currently, many times when we respond to the Croatan, our chargers are getting stuck, and we're having to rely on E&amp;J Automotive and other wrecker services to come pull our vehicles out, which of course, delay once again the timely response that's much needed many times. The communications or our Viper radios, these radios will enable my deputies from anywhere within the county to have clear communications with other deputies, but more importantly, the 911 center where they are dispatched to and from. Commissioner McCabe, there's parts of your county in Adams Creek and Harlow, as you well know, when my deputies are up there, they have no communications with the comm center whatsoever. So they are out there on their, their own. And when you double that with the fact that in some cases, they have to respond down roads that are not suitable for travel by two-wheel-drive vehicles, my deputies have to get out, walk down a road where they don't have comms, potentially place someone to arrest, walk them out to the vehicle, and it could be five or 10 minutes before they reach an area where they have adequate communications with the 911 center. Same thing, Commissioner Jones, in parts of the county in your area. We have parts right now where our deputies have no communications whatsoever. So this is definitely a, a lifeline for my officers, but it could put them in a very, very predicament, and I think it's just been by the grace of God that some of them haven't been seriously hurt and been able to communicate with the 911 center. So this request will enable me to put two four-wheel-drives out there on two of my four shifts, and will put our end-users or our road deputies with up-to-date communications that will enable them to talk amongst themselves, with other agencies within the county, with our EMS and emergency management teams, which, for instance, in the case of our search for Casey, there were many cases where we could not talk amongst other agencies because we did not have the capabilities to. And it is one of the areas of the county, and I think it's actually in Commissioner Mark's area, where we have very little communications with the 911 center when out there, and in some cases, no cellphone coverage. So that's what this request is about.
You entertain a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments, any questions?
Mr. Chair, just because I heard a couple different voices, can we just, can you tell me who the motion, who the second?
I made a motion.
Commissioner McCabe? Second?
I'll say it.
Commissioner Sampson? Okay, thank you.
Got a motion, second. Any comments, any questions? Okay, not hearing none. Ma'am, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
Sheriff, thank you very much, sir.
Chairman, I would like to thank you all for, one, taking the time when I've talked with each of you about this, and for moving on this, and my deputies and their families are very appreciative. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Appointments, pending, current, and upcoming. Let's go through the list here. Pending appointments is the Craven Asian Planning Board, I'm going to hold on that one. Emergency Medical Services Advisory, we got one vacancy. Michael Paul seeks to be reappointed, and we got an application from Keith Morris, current captain for Vance Bar Rescue, seeks to replace Tim Wetherington.
I would make a motion to appoint Keith Morris.
Any questions? Now, I've got a question for you. Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Michael Paul?
Mm-hmm.
Is Keith Morris replacing him, or is Keith Morris wanting to stay on, there's no application for him?
I was told by Patty that Keith Morris will be replacing or seeks to replace Tim Wetherington. So that, Tim Wetherington is off.
Okay, Michael Paul is coming off.
Nope.
Now, Michael Paul is filling the vacancy that existed, and Keith Morris is going to replace Tim Wetherington.
Okay, so we need, we're nominating both of them to stay on.
Correct. Well, one's new.
Right.
Well, they're both new, but one's filling a vacancy and one's replacing someone that's leaving.
But I heard a nomination only for the one.
I nominate Michael Paul for the one.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to be clear. Mr. Paul is going to serve to represent Township 7 EMS, and there's a current vacancy there. Mr. Keith Morris would be representing Vance Bar EMS, so you actually have two vacancies. They're separate appointments.
That's fine, I just want to make sure we got both of them listed in there and going through. All right, thank you. Okay. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we got six vacancies still. Ruth Miller seeks to be appointed, and her application is in here. Do I have a?
I'm making a motion to appoint.
Have any, any comments, concerns? If not, by acclamation, he's still looking for five more on that one. Nursing Home Advisory Committee for vacancy, Ruth Miller seeks to be reappointed, application attached. Question before I ask, can she sit on both boards? She can. Okay. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate him.
Okay, nomination. Any questions, any concerns, issues? By acclamation? Craven County Board of Adjustment, one application, Regional Airport zoning area, we're still waiting.
I want to nominate Mark Gatlin, who's on Pisces Creek Road.
Do we have an application?
And he's got an application, I don't think it's come in yet. He's giving me a verbal agreement. Okay, I'm just saying, we've got a name, and he's got the application.
Soon as we get the application, after you put it on the 18th, we'll bring it forward. Are you nominated, since you will not be here yet?
No.
We'll have somebody nominate, you're already with that?
Yep.
Okay. Craven County Planning Board, Drew Willis seeks reappointment. We have one nomination, one application on file, and that's Johnny Robinson, is seeking appointment.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Willis has served this county faithfully since 1996. We do normally have a 10-year term limit on most board appointments. Mr. Robinson is deeply rooted in this committee, or in this community. You may be familiar with Robinson and Stiss, that is the insurance agent that he is, agency that he is interested in, or is employed by, that's his father's company. He's rooted in the community, he is, he's not young, he's in his 40s, but he has no complex of interests like so many people here do. And while we appreciate Mr. Willis's deeply-rooted support and efforts in this community, he will also remain on a second board in the county that he will continue to be qualified since he is not over the 10-year term limit. So I would ask the board to appoint Mr. Robinson.
Any questions, any comments, any projections?
This, this board is, what district is this board in? Do we have it?
It's District 7. No?
No, District 4.
District 4 Planning Board, see, it was, Drew Willis was appointed by Commissioner Dacey, four years ago.
Right, and Mr. Robinson does live in District 4.
Ms. Sampson, is that okay with you, sir?
Yes.
Okay. No comments, no questions? By acclamation, he's appointed. Thank you, ma'am. Craven County Clean Sweep, Pamela Roberts, term expires February 28th, does not wish to be reappointed. Broderick Stall seeks appointment.
I would appoint Stall.
We have a nomination for Broderick Stall. Any questions, any comments? Hearing none, by acclamation, he's appointed. Okay. Fire Tax Commission, Sean Turney?
Turney.
Seeks reappointment. Trudy Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I am going to take her off and appoint Timothy J. Mason. His qualifications are much higher than her as far as the fire board.
Okay, okay, let me ask you a question. All right. Sean Turney?
I'd like to nominate him. I'm sorry.
Okay, is not, is seeking reappointment. You're saying that you want Timothy Mason to replace Trudy Williams?
Trudy Williams.
Okay, so we have a nomination to Timothy Mason to replace Trudy Williams. Commissioner?
And I would like to nominate Shane Turney for reappointment.
All right, we have two, two nominations. Shane Turney seeks reappointment, to be reappointed, and then Timothy Mason to replace Trudy Williams. Any questions, any comments, concerns? Hearing none, so moved. That takes care of appointments. We got upcoming Farmers Relief Fund, Fire Tax Commissions, and the Craven County Board of Adjustments coming up. So be prepared to take a look at those, see if they're in your districts, and we'll move forward on that one. Next one, the one I've been waiting for all night, is the attorney's report.
So moved.
I'm just glad somebody wants to hear from the lawyer. With the board's patience tonight, I have four items for your consideration. All four involve the sale of county-owned property that was acquired through four tax foreclosure processes. The first two are final acceptances. These two parcels have been through an initial approval by this board, were subject to advertising and the upset bid process, and neither parcel has had any upset bid. The first parcel, no street address, but it's 1044263. As the board may recall, the initial bid was $2,500 for this property. The total taxes and costs that were originally foreclosed on was $2,532.05. The tax value is $13,500. This being the final bid, it is our recommendation that the board accept that and authorize us to move forward with the closing.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any comments, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The second parcel for final approval is 110 North Company Street in Dover. This is a jointly-owned parcel between the county and the town of Dover. The town has jumped through its hoops to authorize this transaction. The purchase price is $2,500. The taxes and costs foreclosed upon were $39,017. The current tax value is $10,000, as with the other parcel, we would recommend final approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next two parcels involve initial offers to purchase. The first is parcel number 1075027. There is no assigned street address. We have received an offer of $2,500. The taxes and costs originally foreclosed upon were $2,285, and the current tax value is $6,880. It is our recommendation that you vote to approve tentatively accepting the offer, and then we'll go through the advertisement and upset bid process.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And finally, another initial offer to purchase, 121 Pine View Street in Havlock. The parcel number is 6064031. This was owned jointly, or is owned jointly with the city of Havlock. The city tentatively approved the offer we have received of $15,000. Taxes and costs foreclosed upon was $18,532.01. Tax value is $40,730. Again, if the board approves this, and we recommend that you do, we'll put it through the advertisement and upset bid process.
Got a motion in a second. Mr. Johnny, did you second it?
Johnny did.
Got a motion in a-
Mr. Chair, can I, I'm not trying to steal the thunder here, but if you give me one second just to tell you two things. One is, the reason the foreclosure's so high on this, because Havlock has a demolition lien. They demolished a structure on the property some years ago. So the percentage on this, as Mr. Grady would note, would be skewed- So the percentage on this, as Mr. Grady would note, would be skewed more toward Havelock. So when you sell this one, well, it might be a big number. You're going to get a smaller percentage than you normally would. The second part, Havelock did approve this. However, they approved it at a tax value of $30,00600. And the reason you see a difference here is there was a correction in the neighborhood adjustment on another question on a separate piece of property that caused the value to go up based on our analysis. So just to be clear, Havelock did approve it at a different number. I have spoke with their manager. We've talked jointly with Mr. Antry. Everything's good from that side. Just want to make it clear, there's two different stories floating there.
And make sure everybody understands as well, I talked to the mayor this afternoon. The board is moving forward. It was a split board on it, but we're still moving forward with the application. It still meets our requirements of more than 25%. I think it's almost close to 30% of the value. We're only going to receive 8 to 12% of this coming back to us, so it's, it's, sorry. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you, thank you, ma'am.
Hope it was worth the wait, Mr. Chair.
Oh, it was, sir. Anytime I get to hear you talk, it's worth the wait. Okay, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be able to share some things with you tonight. Mr. Chair, I'd like to start out with an action item that's not on the agenda. In noting our conversations, the March 4th, 2019 Commissioners' meeting, which will be one month from today, is in conflict with our legislative conference in Washington, DC, where we'll be going advocating behalf of Craven County for Hurricane Florence relief, among other things that are important this year. We will need action from the board and a decision on how you'd like to treat that meeting. You can either cancel it or reschedule it. That's your two choices.
Cancel it. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to cancel. Any other? You have a motion in a second. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As far as what you see that will come in for the 4th, I mean, is it going to be a lot to handle on the second meeting in March or...
It's a little early to say. We are shouldering at your minister's workload at our next meeting. We're going to have the work session that will handle a lot of large issues. I would like to, if you do choose to cancel, to reserve the fact it may be call a special meeting if necessary later that week, based on what I see before that meeting. You know, again, I'm not hearing anything yet because it's awfully early to hear anything like that.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we move the meeting date so that we can go on and put the new meeting on our schedules. Many people have multiple commitments. And then if it is necessary, we can cancel the new date rather than trying to scramble and find one where seven people can be here.
Okay. Let me ask the attorney. I got a motion in a second on the floor to cancel.
Need to take action on that motion. It can be voted upon or withdrawn, subject to further board action.
Okay. Let me go back to the individual made the motion. You want to let it stand on the floor?
Stand on the floor.
Okay. Call for Roca.
So we're voting on to cancel the march?
Cancel.
Okay.
Cancel March 4th.
All right. Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Cancel, cancel. Okay, Mr. Chair, we understand that once we find out in February, later on in February, we got something critical, we can call a special meeting at any time if you have 72 hours.
Forty-eight hours, sir.
Forty-eight hours, yes.
Correct.
As long as that's on the table.
Absolutely. Okay. Let me just go through just some, a couple of items. We've been, we've been busy over the last two weeks. I want to report to the board, we had a very, very successful clean sweep on Saturday. Tremendous turnout from our clean sweep committee and our volunteers in the community. If you see orange trash bags on the side of the road right now, those are largely, in fact, to those folks. As the board's aware, we have added additional funding the last few years to clean sweep to ensure that we have one each quarter. They're really pleased with that and they're really getting a good turnout. Quite frankly, there's enough trash on the side of the road right now. We could have one every month and still not catch up because of the storm and other things. So I'm really proud of that group. They're really coming together and doing a good job. Second thing, I'd like to report on the same vein. The sheriff, I hope he's still here. We have kicked off our litter control program. It's approved in the budget through our solid waste department in partnership with the sheriff. We're now using inmates during the week, a couple of days during the week with one of our staff. And we're out in different communities picking up trash. I've asked Gene to provide some metrics to that as we get through this first month, as we start tracking how much we're picking up, where we're picking up. What I'd like to offer the commissioners is if you have roads in your district that you would like to see this service, to let myself or Gene know, and we'll coordinate it through the solid waste department and make sure that happens.
I do that.
But again, I know the sheriff's really pleased that we're able to partner and use inmates here in Craven County. Our first option was going down to Newport and actually using state inmates. He's been very great to work with on this and we're really thankful for that. And if you see the truck out, it has a big sign about it says, "Bought to be by the Craven County Commissioners and Craven County Sheriff." So folks know that we're trying to take care of our community and get out and clean up a little bit. So, between clean sweep and the inmate program, hopefully we're going to make a difference. Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes.
You made the comment about that there's enormous amount of trash on the road.
Yep.
Western Craven County is just nasty. It's terrible. Mattresses constantly are being thrown out and more and more. A lot of calls about that lately. What kind of authority do we have as far as fines, et cetera, et cetera, to really get serious about if you throw out trash and that you can be held accountable for?
Well, our Code of Ordinances addresses the, I'm looking at Mr. Grady, addresses the fee. Again, it's a citation written by law enforcement. In this case, it'd be the sheriff in the county. I know in the past, I have not spoke with our current sheriff about it, there have been some citations written. Again, I believe there's a burden of proof. It gets difficult at times. You almost have to see him do it. I would certainly defer to the sheriff on the law enforcement side. Mr. Grady, I don't know if you have a feel for the fines?
Not off the top of my head, but we can verify that and report back to the board. The board has pretty broad authority to act on this subject matter. So if we find the provision and the current Code of Ordinances as being insufficient, we can act to amend it or upgrade it as the board may desire.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board would at least start having some discussion about what we might be able to do. I mean, we talked about it and talked about it, but it's ridiculous and it's time that something be done there.
Yeah, I think, let me hold on there, Tom, if you don't mind. We went through this before. We updated our ordinances. I would task the manager and attorney to get together. I think we've got a fair ordinance out there that pretty much stipulated. I think our issue was, under the old system, our judges wasn't fair to us because they wanted verbal sight of the individual dumping, or they wanted pictures showing the individual dumping. So if you could get back with the attorney on that and maybe the sheriff, but, and I understand where you come from here, but I think, I think we're pretty much covered. If I'm not, you know, jumping, manager, that we did this two years ago when we went through that, when we had this issue, when Steve brought it up that we changed our ordinances to reflect that, the fines. But our issue was, once we got them into court, even though we found the names of the individual in the trash, the judge says you have no witness that he actually dumped it. So I would just say, the three of y'all, if you wouldn't mind.
Let's dust off our notes on that. Commissioner Liner, Chairman Liner, I do remember those conversations. I'm just not off the front of my mind here.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnny.
We're talking about the county, I know the city, we have a pretty bad way in the city. We're on South Street. I've been out there picking up trash. And all day today, up there around my area, so much trash up there. And I plan on giving my grandson, little grandson, go out there with me to go a little further down the street. But the county don't have anything to do with the city picking up trash.
I got a good news for you. The county and the city have the very same program. The city started about a year ago with a program exactly like ours, same inmate basis, however they use the state inmates. I see them around quite often. I would suspect they have a way you can outreach to the city to let them know the areas in which you want. And maybe one day we can partner together and tackle a really hard area and look for that opportunity.
Yeah, but we're going to have to do something up there, I tell you. Since I saw it, it hasn't settled down a bit.
Yes, sir.
The inmates, are they going to do the highways or they're going to come on the secondary roads?
We're not going to be focused on the highway because DOT has a contract for those. And they're picked up, I believe, six times a year, Mr. Hodges, is that correct, roughly? So we're going to focus our attention on the secondary roads, which get no attention now, other than clean sweep. And obviously, it's a very vast secondary road system in the county. But we, our intention is to spread it around. Yes, sir.
So you'd be clean sweep and inmates or going to be separate entities?
Our inmate program will take place during the week. Clean sweep will have quarterly sweeps where they have a large grouping of volunteers that come in four times a year and are able to tackle an area.
Okay.
We're hoping that the partnership, we're trying to have multiple resources out.
So I'm trying to organize the clean sweep so one day, on a Saturday, whatever it is, they can come down in a hollow area and to myself and help pick a lot of trash.
The key to that is getting an active member from your district on the clean sweep board. I've learned that, working with that group, that the more active you have someone from your district, the more, they're able to build upon those relationships within the clean sweep network.
I'll find somebody.
What, when I say what kind of trash are we, is the inmate program going to focus? I'm really talking about what size? Are we talking litter? Are we talking washing machines and mattresses? I'm assuming it is more on the litter end. And my concern with that is if it becomes known that, "Put your mattress on the side of the road," and the sheriff's department and the inmates will come by and pick it up, people could construe that as a great way to get rid of things in their household rather than hauling them to the dump themselves.
Right. So we are not going to be able to deal with a large illegal dumping operation. Basically, what we are looking at, stuff that fits in the bag. Right? So we, I mean, we'll pick up a tire, you know, throw it in the back of the truck, something like that. But we're certainly not going to be able to tackle. When I saw a pile today, I don't know if it was Commissioner Mark's district or Commissioner Jones's district, somewhere in there, somebody dumped one, I mean, it filled this room up over the weekend. Very unpleasant.
That was shingles.
Yeah, very unpleasant scenario. And Commissioner Mitchell, it brings a good point that that's, that's a real problem. It's a real problem in our county right now.
That was handled very well by the sheriff's department. Deputy Moses, I believe, went there and somebody dumped a pile of shingles. And now Dodd is removing them, so.
Good. Very good. Okay. Some positive things that happened last week. Attended, and I'm sure some commissioners will talk about it, Highway 70 scoping meeting over at Cornerstone Church. Very good information. Fast-moving project. Certainly going to be complex. And I'll defer to the commissioners to give their opinions of what they saw. But I think what we need to do as a county is make sure we're able to provide those digital resources, mapping, videos and things that are there on our website, which we'll do, so the public has some notification, along with what DOT is doing there. I'm really pleased. We had a nice visit with Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Booker Friday ago. And we were able to tour the county facilities and journal orientation. It was a really nice process. And I'd offer that to any commissioners at any time if you ever would like to go with Gene around, just take a look at the water plant, whatever it is, we're more than willing to do that. I think they got a lot out of the experience and probably saw more in a day. We've still got a whole nother day to go. So we're looking forward to that. Lastly, just kind of polling you, not an action item tonight. I have received word from our health director and animal services director. There is an upcoming animal adoption week at the end of February. Going into March, they would like to have some events at our animal shelter. One of the things they'd like to do is reduce the rates to encourage adoption. If you're receptive to that, I would bring forth the resolution at the next meeting for your approval. If not, we'll just go about the events we were planning anyway. We would still cover our cost in the event.
You're going to bring it back on the 18th?
Yes, sir. Bring it back on the 18th. So without objection, I'll do that.
Any objections?
Mr. Chair, board, that's my report unless you have something for me.
Board, you have any questions for the manager?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, commissioners report. We'll start with Commissioner Booker.
Thank you. We got, I've got three quick subjects. Number one would be the meeting that the manager just spoke about. Several of us attended a meeting on Wednesday, I guess, Thursday. Wednesday? Yeah, Wednesday. Held by the state to give us an update on what's going to happen on Highway 70. The, and these are, these are not, I don't think these are concrete numbers, but they told us this is where they think they're going to be. Two years from right now, the construction will have started. So the next two years, they're going to be purchasing the property necessary to make the improvements. They're going to widen the surf, the side roads that we call now access roads. They're going to do some other improvements to allow the traffic to keep moving. And I've heard two numbers, three years and four years for the construction to be completed. This will start at the Trent River Bridge and it will extend to Carolina Colors intersection, the light at Carolina Colors. So it'll be five lights, four or five lights that will be eliminated. This road will then be considered interstate quality so that traffic will flow, when it comes to our city from the west, from Kinston, it'll flow all the way through and then eventually to the Havelock bypass. So it'll, it'll make traffic flow a lot better. But more importantly, last year, we had about 500 accidents at those five intersections. 500. Some very serious accidents. So this is going to make life a lot better, but it's going to be very painful to get there. So you can go to the Department of Transportation website and get a lot of information, but simply stated, we got a couple of years and then the fun's going to begin. So that, that's the report on that. The second thing is, I attended a board meeting of the Hunter's Ridge Homeowners Association. And it was well-attended. Normally, they say they have about 20 people at about a 20-minute meeting. This meeting went for over two hours. The subject was Duke Energy. It seems that the power for Hunter's Ridge, and I guess I did know this, but a lot of people ask the question why, the power for Hunter's Ridge comes through the croatan from Havelock. And during the hurricane or any storm, because it's so wet, a lot of the trees fall down on the line. So Duke came with about six or seven people and gave a really good report of the proactive things they're going to try to do to reduce the number of outages. Apparently, that development just has power, outages on a constant basis. So the people left there, I believe, feeling positive that if Duke does what they say they're going to do, things are going to improve dramatically. The third thing was mentioned, and I'll let Commissioner Mitchell talk about the, briefly about the tour that we had. So that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Jones?
I have nothing. Nothing.
Commissioner? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The commissioners attended the state-mandated Essentials of County Government last Thursday and Friday, the 31st of January and the 1st of February. I'd like to commend the county staff for their orientation program for new commissioners. Virtually everything that's North Carolina's university system, school of government recommended, you should ask your county manager for. Craven County Commissioners had already experienced because it had already been set up. And I, one of the things that I thought was most useful was the county tour. I thought I knew the county pretty well. I didn't. And it was tremendously useful in terms of the mechanics of the systems that make this And it was tremendously useful in terms of the mechanics of the systems that make this county run that we don't see and we don't think about until they don't work, and then our entire way of life crashes. So, I commend the county for doing that, looking forward to the, to phase two of it, and that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, sir. Many of you may remember that normally in April of every year, the Craven Community College hosts the Community Fabric Awards. Normally, that is in our convention center. Obviously, that is not going to be feasible this year. It has been moved, the event has been moved to the Havelock Convention Center on the 24th, 24th of April. This is when Craven Community College recognizes three categories: outstanding individual leaders, outstanding business leaders, and one outstanding educator. And I like this award because one of the criteria is it has to be above and beyond your normal duties. In other words, if you get paid for doing it, it doesn't qualify. If you were doing this in addition, if you were doing your projects in addition to everything else that you do in your normal daily life, really giving back, it does. So, please mark your calendar for the 24th of January, of April, and it will be down in Havelock Convention Center this year. That's all, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner McKay?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I'd just like to say that instead of scripture, I don't want to leave anyone wrong. If you don't keep the true Word of Jesus Christ, you ain't nothing here too. Because Scripture tells you, Jesus is no respecter person, and if you don't keep His command, don't think because you're a Democrat or Republican or Independent that you got it made. I'm not gonna sit here and let that kind of message go out on the media that only Democrats would go to hell. Now, all I want to talk about, I was able to attend the meeting over in Craven, and I'm very thankful to Commissioner Mitchell, because I was born to have an operation, and I finally didn't want me to drive over there, so she took me and brought me back, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. And this is the way we have to love our fellow person. That goes for man, woman, male, female, any human. We're supposed to love Him without ceasing, as Christ first loved us and still loves One more thing concerning our doctors, I know, I notice a lot of people when they go to the doctors and the doctor tells them, "Well, you owe this, or you owe that," and they don't question it. So, it's good to get a clear understanding when the doctor tells you you owe something, and you got, you know you got insurance. You better speak up right then because they'll send you a bill. I paid a bill one time itself that a doctor had sent to my house, and I had insurance that would have paid the bill. So, we need to check on that pretty good. I would've been out quite a bill of money if I hadn't have checked on it. So, I want all our citizens to realize that, and anyone not paying attention, I don't care how rare you know the system, you can get caught. So, check your bill, especially the doctor bill and all your other bills, check them good, and make sure you're not paying for something that's already paid for. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Question mark?
Yeah. I attended two meetings this past two weeks. One was on Highway 17, which was held on January 23rd up in Beaufort County Community College. Senator Harry Brown was there, spoke about how important the roads were to economic development in Craven County and Carrick County. In addition, something that I think most people would be interested in is that Mill Street and Bridgeston to 43 will be, the right-of-way will be beginning on 2020. It's gonna cost 7.7 million, and construction will begin and continuing from Mill Street up to 43, beginning 2022, costing 28.5 million. So, that is progress. On Highway 70, I won't talk about, you already covered that area, but I would like to mention on Highway 70, that attended a meeting on the 31st, and we had the Honorable Secretary of Commerce, Tony Copeland, and NC Dot Secretary James Trojan, General. And they spoke about the continuing of US 70 Corridor Commission. So, then eventually, the main purpose of all this work on 70 is not only for the problem that we've had with accidents, but is also to get us to the port so that we can pick up economic development along the road, which I think is very important. And right now, I think it's important that US 17 from Washington bypassed to Williamson is also.
It's the biggest one.
Be completed, construction in June of 20, beginning of construction, June of 20, rather. So, that gives you an idea, we're finally working on the roads, and not only repaving, but I think the Kinston bypass, that is coming up and headed towards Dover, and having an exit in Dover, which will help John Weatherington a lot. So, that's my report on the two highways. But progress is finally being made, and I think it's gonna help not only economic development in the county, but it's also gonna help us as far as the port is concerned, and that's important.
And safety.
And safety.
Yeah, right.
Especially in James City.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, if we had two Commissioners that had nothing, I'll take their time. Appreciate that. Let's go through a few things that we've got here.
Did you say we had two milking Commissioners?
No, I did not. They gave me their time. I want to remind everybody, on the 18th of February meeting, we got our morning meeting, and then we're gonna go into a workshop. Be prepared to go all day that day. We've got a lot of things, a lot of key issues that's in that workshop that we have to sit down and discuss and go through and talk about, so be prepared to be here all day. Mostly for the community out there and the Board. Remember back in September, so we were gonna have a military stand-down, the fifth military stand-down, that got put aside because of the storm. On the 22nd of February, from 9:00 to 1300, the Military Vet Stand Down will take place. I think it's White Center, Church, 22, Dayspring Christian Center. And that's gonna go from 9:00 to 1:00. Anyone interested in that, especially for the vets, active-duty vets, homeless, anyone. There'll be a lot of services, a lot of things there. There'll be, will be feeding going on there as well. 19th of March, I need all of you to take a look at your emails. We have our district meeting that will be in Onslow County on the 19th of March. We will be leaving here at 4:00, and it normally, we normally get back about 8:30. They provide us an evening meal, and it's gonna be on the opioid crisis that we'll attend. And that's our district to go to, to meet on that. So, that's the 19th of March. I will be, starting Sunday, I will be in Chapel Hill from the 10th through the 15th at the School of Government aboard Chapel Hill for a leadership course to attend there. Next, I have an action item that I would like to bring to the floor. You know, some time back, probably two months ago, we were made aware that we have an issue at the jail in regards to some doors. We've gone out for quotes. We've had quotes come back to repair 32 doors in that jail to what we consider as satisfactory. I think the Sheriff will concur. They've worked on the eight that we've done so far. We've had no issues with. To attune to repair those is $19,200 to repair those. It's a safety issue, not only for the inmates, but also for our jailers as well, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Okay, based on that, Manager, I'll leave anything out?
No, sir. I think you got everything covered.
Okay.
I'll continue, John.
Motion for a second. Got a motion for a second? I'm in favor. So is her.
Oh, boy.